Four thirty. Any considerations of any changes, additions, or removal to the agenda? I'd like to make a motion to reorder the agenda, take up the executive session after the VESA presentation and before the public comment period.
I would second that. Got to ask for a vote.
Yeah, can I get a vote?
Aye.
All in favor?
Yeah, aye.
All right, Ken Nolan, general manager of VESA.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You're with me, I brought some presentations for everyone, hopefully I've got enough, but I'm not sure. That's a good place to stand.
Sure.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I can send these electronically to Tom if anybody else can't get them tonight wants them. Just for the record, I'm Ken Nolan, I'm the general manager for Vermont Power Supply. Tom asked me to come down and just talk about what VESA does and what the cost to Ludlow is and what the benefits you get are. It's a conversation I have to have every few years with all the members as people turn over, boards turn over, public ask questions. So happy to do this whenever it's useful for you. First slide on the inside, just to kind of reset. We were originally created back in nineteen seventy-nine, created by the legislature. If you go to Title Thirty, Chapter Eighty-four, it's a whole list of our enabling statutes. Originally, VESA was created by a subset of municipal utilities who were trying to invest in the McNeil generating plant, wood burning plant up at Burlington. They found that they couldn't raise enough money on their own to do so. So they combined together and created VESA as a financing entity at that time. So we actually own the interest in McNeil plant and then pass through the costs and benefits to all of our members. And it's kind of expanded from there over the years. We'll talk a little bit about what that is and why. Next page, just give you a brief rundown on who the members are present. We've had anywhere between nine and fourteen municipal utility members at any given time. Right now, it's eleven and has been for the last more than two decades. The blue numbers beside the names are just roughly how many customers meter count each of those numbers have. So you see, overall, pretty small, sold down seven hundred customers, largest being just over almost six thousand. The next slide in, are the services we offer today, and it's a wide range of items. So as we sit today, VESA is actually the entity that interacts with ISO New England for all of the municipal utilities. We do all of the market interactions on power supply. We also negotiate contracts, build generation plants. That's well, first line item. On financial services side, do everything from borrowing money for members on their behalf, issuing bonds, building joint projects that require financing. The most active on the financial services right now is, most of the municipal members own shares in Vermont Electric Power Company, the transmission company. Quite often, the utilities can't afford to buy their own shares. They'll have VESA buy them on their behalf, we borrow the money, we pay loans and use the dividends from that stock ownership to pay off the loans. And when the loans are paid, we hand the stock over to the utility. So it's a way to keep a dividend and revenue stream coming in for customers, but not have to raise capital yourselves. Do rates and planning, so anytime you're following a rate case where you're looking at a new design for rates. For example, right now, we're talking with Tom and Michael about new rates for Okemo, whether it makes sense to kind of change how that rate is structured. We look at all those analysis for you. And also integrated resource plan. We prepare every three years, utilities are required to file an integrated resource plan by the state. We have staff that does that internally and prepare every three years and manage that on behalf of the members. Legislative regulatory front, we are, we have a person in the legislature all during the session. We also have an external lobbyist who's monitoring bills that might affect municipal utilities. We're there to testify, to help draft the legislation, make sure that you're informed of what's going on and have input into anything that might affect you. On the regulatory side, any docket or case, it's open by the Public Utility Commission. Right now, there are nine or ten going simultaneously. We're there, we put in comments, sit in the hearings or workshops, and coordinate a response amongst all the public power entities. VESA members, but also those that are not our members, try to make sure that the municipal perspective is in front of the regulators. IT and technology support, you don't use this as much as others do, but we offer, we have four IT staff who help maintain servers, email accounts. If anything's going wrong in your system, they can come in, run the network, troubleshoot it. And now, the last couple of years, we've gotten very heavy in the cybersecurity aspect. We have a grant going right now from the Department of Homeland Security to assess all of the utility's cyber situation and try to figure out what could be done to improve that. And to the extent we find solutions, we tend to try, we'll try to implement those on a centralized nature as much as we can to reduce costs and get economies of scale. And that's expanding over time. Communications and outreach, obviously websites, we do press releases, any major projects you have, you want to get out, help you draft. Articles, advertisements, social media posts, things of that nature. Now, we'll talk a little bit more about the GIS, that's Geographic Information System or mapping, which we have, three years ago, we started a program to do mapping on behalf of all the members. We bought the software, have the servers set up, have had a person on staff to do that. Renewable energy standard, talk quite a bit more about, it's a very complicated, very expensive part of the business these days, but it's a state mandate. This involves both the purchase of renewable energy as well as kind of a unique structure in Vermont where you're obligated to help customers convert away from fossil fuel use. There's a mandatory calculation and compliance filings that happen, and we handle all of that on behalf of the utilities that are members. And then out of that, we started a key accounts program, really dedicating a staff member to work with the local municipality and largest customers to figure out how we can help them better and align the interests of both parties to accept the can. Ludlow's case, this is really, Okemo is a large focus of what we're talking about. On the next slide, just a little bit on the operational philosophy. You can think of us like a captive consulting company. Ludlow is one of our owners, you have access to all the staff there whenever you need us. And it could, your interests and needs could change over time, day to day, month to month, year to year. But we have one or two, sometimes three, if we're doing really good in an area, expert staff in various functional areas of the company, the business, and they're at your disposal. We use them, it's, if you think about it, we're like the corporate entity with divisions underneath. So stuff that would normally be done in a larger utility at the corporate level, we're trying to have staff there and make them available to all the members, so you don't have to have those people on staff here. You don't have to keep a regulatory person paid on full time when you only really need them a few weeks, a month out of the year. And we share amongst the utilities that way. Most recently, the services have been focused on, from renewable energy standard aspects, distributed generation. A lot of solar proposed to be built, a lot of rebate programs around heat pumps and electric vehicles. Where the state's mandating things, we're building out capabilities there, and technology. We talked, I think the last time was down, about the advanced metering project, the geographic information system. I think you are ahead of the game here a little bit with NISP that you put in, is it a year ago now, Tom?
Two years.
Two years? Yeah, so a lot of the smaller utilities haven't upgraded their customer information system in fifteen or twenty years. And they're now starting to talk about, what do we do to replace it? And a lot of them are talking about putting in the same system you have here. We're helping them evaluate that and figure out what the best way to go is. And then the customer outreach, I would say, I started working at VESA back in the late eighties. And at that time, it was a very firm separation. We were the back office, dealing with the state folks, trying to keep them off your back. And all of our municipal members were really focused on the customer. And we didn't talk to customers unless you invited us in. And that's really starting to blur now, as we're having to do rebate programs and help some of the industrial customers move off fossil fuels. We're finding that it's really a three-way partnership more and more. So it's been a change for us, because we've been very careful not to talk to retail customers in the past. And now we're having to figure out how to do that. Next page, let's give you an idea of who the staff is. Really, you've got kind of four groups. Crystal Carrier, who was our CFO, has now stepped back, she's moving toward retirement. And she's focused more on customer, on member assistance. Doing a lot of work up in Barton where they lost their manager, starting to help in Jacksonville, because we're trying to help them replace a person right now. But she fills holes, if you have somebody leave and needs kind of short-term support, she's available. Starting on the left-hand side, the rates department, we have two people in rates, they do all the rate cases, rate design, resource planning, integrated resource planning, I should say. Next group, five people there, all of the GIS position is vacant right now, and we're assessing whether we're going to refill that or not. But four are really IT-focused people, one on network administrator. The manager of that group is moving into retirement this fall, so we brought in an assistant. And then we have an applications developer who helps write software for us and has written some programs for members to do things like net metering. The center of the box is our finance group, they do VESA's finances, they also help with accounting, questions and support and audits, audit support for the members, kind of depends on where your situation is. Some of our member utilities are not, are less strong in the accounting realm, so we can step in and help them out. And then the right-hand side is our power supply regulatory and legislative group. Two dedicated full-time people managing the power supply. In the ISO New England market, it's a pretty heavy lift. We have to bid both generation and load requirements every single day. And then we have other markets there every month, every quarter, and annually, kind of a lot to manage there to make sure that you're staying up in the markets and not getting penalized for not doing what you need to do. And they also negotiate some of the longer-term contracts. Dave Gagné, the one on the lower right, he is full-time at our Peking plant in Swanton, which you're a part participant in. And he's there just to make sure that the plant runs and produces what has to produce. It's a pretty big revenue source for us and a fair amount of risk, it's a thirty million dollar plant. Doesn't run right, it's a big financial expense there. Just threw in here, this is being updated right now, but our, every year, we do a strategic plan with the board of directors. Tom participates in that, Ludlow. And then we highlight, we're working specifically on five separate areas. I think I covered pretty much all of those in the description above, but we're really focused on membership value and the technology competence, trying to increase the technology capabilities, both internally and amongst the members. So that's kind of the overview of VESA, how we operate, what we're focused on. From here on in, I pulled out some information based on the 2023 budget, specific to Ludlow, so you can get an idea of what you're involved in, what the financial structure is. And we'll talk about each project on this third page in more detail, but just to give a general idea, this list of all the separate, what we call projects, or year parlance probably funds that VESA manages. We have a generating plant related to the plant in Burlington, we run a central computer operation, which I'll describe. Project Ten is that Peking plant in Swanton that I mentioned. The renewable energy standard is all the costs around complying with the state requirements for renewable power. I mentioned the application developer. Again, this is something you guys don't really need, because the NISP setup will allow you to do net metering calculations. But for those folks who got billing systems that are twenty years old, they were never designed to deal with the complexity of the way Vermont handles the net metering of this rooftop solar. So we actually have written an application that other utilities can use to calculate credits and travel and all that stuff. The AMI project, which we'll talk about, GIS. I want to note here that Ludlow did pull out of that project in August. So I think the last bill for that is either here or is about to be sent, I'm not sure exactly. But after September, you'll be out of that project and have no more costs associated with it. Sanders Grant is a very specific one-time item that I'll plug into some detail on. And then the way we're structured, each of those projects I described up to this point, you individually decide whether you want to participate or not. The member dues is really designed to cover all the core, anything that is not covered by one of these other projects gets put in the member dues portion, and those charges are by load ratio shares. We take an average of the last two years of load for each of the utilities, and then it gets allocated out whatever remaining expenses we have. So diving into McNeil a little bit more, we own a nineteen percent share. Plant is also owned by Burlington Electric and Green Mountain Power, Burlington owning fifty percent. We own nineteen and JMP owns the rest. Under a contract that Ludlow entered with VESA back in the late eighties, early nineties, you signed up for a ten point five two six, I went up to three desal places, I don't know, but ten point five two six percent of the entitlement. So that's, way it's calculated is, you get ten and a half percent of VESA's nineteen percent, or basically two percent of the entire plant output. And so you get the value of all the products that are produced, and you also are obligated to pay that ten percent portion of our costs. Our costs are primarily, it's, the vast majority are invoices we get from Burlington Electric. They are the operator of the plant, so they procure the fuel, they, there's forty staff members to run the facility. Those are all Burlington employees, any debt that's incurred, Burlington issues. And we get a monthly bill from them, and essentially just pass that through to member utility that cost. And then we have an allocation of our internal staff time, primarily my time to sit on the management committee there. Each of the owners has a seat on the committee to help make decisions. Day to day, Burlington really owns and operates it. So I put at the bottom, kind of the main drivers in our expenses, these are not plant costs, this is VESA's share. But it's, the fuel itself for the facility is about four million dollars a year for us. And then the fixed costs for the labor, O and M, debt service is about twenty, two point eight million. Central computer, you're not part of, you have no costs for this, but I just wanted to give you an understanding of what we do. So Morrisville and Lindenville asked us to stand up a central server for them. So we have actually a computer server at VESA's offices in Waterbury with their customer information system on that. And they use Internet access to get in, do what their business they have to do. But we manage the whole thing, we manage, maintain the software, maintain the hardware. If they have connections go down, we're responsible for getting it back up. And those costs are split between those two utilities. So they're the only two right now, there was three originally, Barton was part of that as well, but those two are continuing. So Ludlow is not any part of that, you see no costs for it. On Project Ten, that's a Swanton Peakers plant, we own that a hundred percent. Dave Gagné, the plant operator, is on our payroll. And Ludlow, again, under a separate contract, you've signed up for ten percent of that facility. So in the same way as McNeil, and you get ten percent of whatever value is created, you pay ten percent of the cost. And Dave's hours, FTE, is built into that project cost directly. As you see, the plant doesn't run hardly at all, it's really there for capacity, so it's available if it's needed in emergency. And ISO New England has what they call a forward reserve market, that they will pay plants to sit and be ready and turn on in ten minutes if they need the power. That's the majority of the revenue for our facilities, we're sitting there twenty-four hours a day waiting to turn on if the ISO needs the power. Major expenses there, you see it's, you know, two million dollars in debt service. That goes up to twenty twenty-nine and that'll go away. O and M and insurance is about enough, just under nine hundred thousand, and a couple hundred thousand dollars in admin and other expenses. Property tax, property taxes being one of the big ones. The renewable energy standard, this is becoming significant expense for all the utilities in the state. The way it's set up, the legislature created this, being overseen by the Public Utility Commission. They have three tiers that you have to meet. The tier, what they call tier one, is general renewability. And started out with about forty percent renewable requirement, and it's ramping up to seventy-five percent by twenty thirty-two. So all utilities individually are obligated to slowly grow your share of renewable energy each year up to that seventy-five percent level. And they actually have a legislative study committee that's going to start meeting in September to talk about increasing that to a hundred percent. We, I sit on the committee on behalf of the VESA membership. And that committee, we've been told, we will, will prepare a bill to be voted on in the legislature. And if we don't, then the Speaker of the House has already said they're going to move something without us. So we're at the table trying to negotiate what's in our members' best interest. The second tier, tier two, is very unique, it's small scale. It's going to be twelve percent of your retail sales by twenty thirty-two. The only generation that qualifies there are generators, less than five megawatts, connected to a Vermont distribution system and built after July first, twenty fifteen. Essentially, that means small solar is all that qualifies. And Ludlow, in all honesty, does not have much small scale. This is something that you, I know we're talking about a couple of projects here, trying to get those credits. But right now, you really don't have any yourself, and you're buying them typically from other municipal utilities. I'll talk about that in a second. Tier three is the energy transformation tier that I mentioned. So there's a requirement, again, for each utility to help customers convert away from fossil fuels. And you have to incentivize, typically means rebates. Customers putting in either, either buying an electric vehicle and getting rid of their gasoline vehicle, putting in electric heat pumps, replacing oil or gas-fired heating. We're doing incentives for forklifts, spending a lot of time on industrial customers, helping them look at different process improvements to get away from fossil fuels. In your case, Okemo's talked for several years about converting their snowmaking away from diesel to more electric compressors. Could be a huge benefit on this tier three front, so we're working with the staff here to try to figure out how we can make that happen. So VESA's role here, when the RES, Renewable Energy Standard was first passed, it was very focused on each utility making these improvements within side your service territory. And we've, we understood very early on that to say you've got to build twelve percent of your retail sales through solar, or you've got to help your customers change twelve percent of their usage over electric, is a very heavy lift for small municipals that have a very tight footprint. So you wouldn't be able to really do that. So we got a sentence inserted in the bill that said, if you're a VESA member, then you can comply in the aggregate, which means we, although we track compliance for every individual utility, when we report to the state, we're reporting on behalf of all eleven in total. That allows us behind the curtains to trade some of these credits. So if, it happened last year, Hardwick had a big project for one of their commercial customers, they had excess, and other folks didn't have enough, we could move credits from Hardwick to the other utilities, and they were still in compliance. If we hadn't had that language in the bill, or you weren't a VESA member, then we wouldn't have been able to do that, and it would have been an alternative compliance payment, a penalty payment due to the state for inability to meet the targets. That's required, though, a pretty significant buildup in administrative overhead at VESA. So we have an employee that's focused on this almost half-time at least. We've had to coordinate with Efficiency Vermont, under the statute, we're required to make sure that the same people aren't, the same projects aren't getting money from the efficiency utility and the distribution utility. So we have weekly meetings with Efficiency Vermont, we developed a full rebate program for residential customers. And there's a large focus on low income in this, so we have to separately track how much money is going to low income and moderate income customers versus the overall POP. There's a plan that you have to file every fall with, what are you going to do in the following year? So we prepare that on behalf of everybody. And then there's a compliance, a typical state program, at the end, you've got to put a compliance report in, go through a verification, the Department of Public Service comes in and audits the findings and has to give you a blessing that, yes, you did it correctly. We handle all of that stuff. I think the, to the extent that Ludlow is involved, we are making sure you understand what we've done with the credits, where we've either sold or bought from. And obviously, it's a two hundred thousand dollar expense for you, it's over a million dollars now for VESA total. And that's going up every year as the requirement. That's going up every year as the requirements go up. So I put the big line items in here, the REX, this is Vepsa wide. Purchasing the renewable energy credits that are required for that tier one and tier two, that's over a million dollars in sales right now. The rebates that we've been sending out this year, it's $275,000. And then there's some customer outreach, marketing materials, things of that nature and admin. I won't talk about the net metering. I think we've already covered that. Just to say that you, because your billing system handles the calculations, you don't need to participate in that project. AMI projects, this has been going on for about five years now to get to the point where we're ready to deploy. Initially and for the last several years, we had this project was, the costs were allocated based on load ratio share and they were fairly minimal. We hired a consultant to help us go through each member and make sure everyone was in a good position to deploy advanced metering, to help us do an RFP, to get the right vendor, all of that. Starting in 2023, so this year's budget, we moved to deployment. So we've made all the decisions. We're doing the regulatory filings now. And this year, the first four utilities to get deployed are the ones who are covering the costs. Based on the schedule we're seeing right now, 2024 is when Ludlow will be pulled into this project. And I put down at the bottom here what's your projected capital cost and annual ongoing are. I would note the capital cost, we were successful last year in getting the legislature to earmark $8 million to municipal power utilities in total. We ended up with $5 million of that for Vepsa members. And we've allocated it out to all the members based on the meters that you serve. So Ludlow's share of that grant would be about 551,000. And so a net project cost after accounting for that grant is, just shy of 700,000. And we're, we'll work through the financing of that.
You may want to mention that who was the spearhead for that?
Who was the spearhead? Yes, Alison was wonderful. We gave her an award because she, she actually.
Pushed it through.
She, she was liaison at the last, last second when it was in conference committee trying to get through, we had a lot of pushback for people trying to take it. She was acting as the go-between, getting information from us and presenting. Very important there. So on the financing side, the capital, we list the costs here as if Ludlow's going to pay it directly. You borrow your own money or if you want to pay it out of your funds, I mean, it's your choice. We have borrowed money on the Vepsa side so that if any members who want us to finance it and turn it into a monthly bill, we can, we can do so. So it's really to be worked out, but there are options and have a proceed with that. I mentioned the GIS. This is something, we're getting a lot of pressure from the state to improve the technology capabilities of municipal utilities. So AMI is, is one portion of that. The mapping system is the other. A lot of the municipal utilities have nothing. The map is in some lineman's head who's been there for 30 years and he just kind of knows where to go. So that's getting harder and harder to deal with in this, this environment. So we, we realize it was a heavy lift for a lot of utilities to, to fund that and staff it and collect the data. So we've centralized the project. We have, again, we've got server at Vepsa with the software on it, using a company called Empower, which, which allows us to tie the geographic map to the advanced meter data. So one of the things you'll get with the new meters is outage reporting. Whenever someone loses power, the meter will send that information back by linking it to the mapping system. You can see a visual of what's going on in the system and have a better idea of what's happening quickly so you can know where to send through. Just one aspect of what it, what it offers. Ludlow collected, they actually hired Empower to collect a lot of data from the system. We were pulling that together. We were running into some issues with Vepsa trying to standardize across all the members. And the fact that Ludlow already had your data in hand, the feeling became that our technician wasn't moving fast enough. You guys have the data, you want access to it, understandable. So in August, Tom sent us notice that NISC could actually stand that up within the software you already have. So we're moving over to that. We'll have to then take that data and connect it back into some of the systems we have. At this point, Ludlow will be out of the Vepsa GIS project and be out running your own system locally through this. Sanders Grant, I've gotten a lot of questions from this from various utilities. Because we saw the renewable energy standard, in particular the tier three component of that, becoming more and more costly over time. And it's money out the door, right? You're, you're basically handing a check to the customer to get them to convert to a non-fossil fuel used appliance. For residential customers, it's not hugely expensive. And oftentimes if the person's buying an electric vehicle or a heat pump, you'll, you're in a position where you recoup that rebate money over time because they're buying electricity from the utility. So you pay a little bit now, you get some of that back over time and it's not a huge draw. We were seeing on the commercial industrial side, the rebates that were required for some of these projects that happened were 50, $100,000. We had one company in Lindenville that was a glass manufacturer, looking at a natural gas furnace or an electric furnace. They wanted a $400,000 rebate in order to pick the electric furnace. It's just a level of money we, we just can't come up with even at Vepsa's scale. So we talked to Senator Sanders about this issue and proposed to him a revolving loan fund, trying to get some money from Congress that then we could manage and loan the fund instead of giving a check to a commercial industrial customer. We would loan them the money at zero interest or thereabouts and have them pay it back over time. So we then could loan it to the next company. But it turned that tier three credit, instead of requiring money out, out the door, we were helping them raise capital and getting that money back. So it became a non-cost to utilities. So Senator Sanders proposed that in the 2022 appropriations bill, it made it through. And we're working with Department of Energy right now to free up those funds to be able to loan it out to customers. But it did end up requiring a one time, one year charge to the members because we have to, that million dollars requires a 20, 20% match. So for one year, being 2023, we charged that match and it's sitting in the fund and we'll be billing Vepsa staff time against that as we deploy the loan. So you'll see Sanders Grant in the bills for 2023 and 2024 that goes away. And the last thing I wanted to talk about before we get into the member service side is I'm sure everybody's hearing about all the federal bills that are coming down. You have the IIJA, the IRA, the ARPA. There's all billions of dollars coming out of the federal government right now. A lot of it targeted toward municipal utilities and municipalities in general. And we're finding that a lot of the utilities just can't, don't have the staff or the capability to write the grants and do the reporting and everything. So we've stepped up on that front, hired an outside consultant to help us, but are using internal staff too to, to write grants and try to grab some of that money for our members. So I just put on here a, a list of some of them we've gotten recently. The Sanders Grant we talked about, the $5 million from AMI with Senator Nitka's help. We got $120,000 from Homeland Security to help with the cyber assessments that I mentioned. So that's not costing the utilities anything. It's fully, it's 100% covered. We left $72,000 from the DPS to look at electric vehicle rates and what the best way to go forward there is. We're working with outside consultants, trying to look at different various options there. V-Lights, the Vermont Low Income Trust for Energy, that was created when Green Mountain Power bought CBPS. They had to spin off some of their ownership and Velco, the transmission company. And that's now, the dividends on that stock is being used to create the fund and they give grants every year. So we got $90,000 from them specifically to help people who want to convert to electricity for heat pumps or electric vehicles. Particularly if some people find that when you, you buy the equipment and your panel in your house isn't sufficiently sized to let it happen. So this is money that can be used to upgrade service panels and transform. The ACRE program is this state recovery money that was targeted for renewable energy. And Vepsa got a million and a half dollars toward a solar project actually being built in Barton. That's permits are going to be filed in a couple of weeks here. But that allows us to turn that project into more of a community solar. So low income customers in any of the Vepsa member utilities can sign up to get a portion of that power off the solar project, no cost. It's the, the state investment of a million and a half will pay down the, the power there. So it'll show up as a reduction on customers' bills. We designed that such that the Vepsa solar project, but it allows customers from any of the utilities to sign up, participate. And this ESAP grant is one that's going on right now. There's a lot of focus around load control, flexible load management, they call it, and in-home batteries. Green Mountain Power has done a fabulous job of marketing people having Tesla power walls or things like that in your basement. Still not convinced that it's at the economic benefit, they say. But the state has certainly bought in. So we filed jointly with Burlington Electric and Washington Electric Co-op. And we're just told last week, we got a grant for 4.1 million to look at. The software to manage those batteries and, you know, turn them on and off when we need to for peak production and to actually deploy batteries in people's homes. And a portion of that is earmarked toward municipal properties as well. So we're looking at town offices, fire departments, things like that that could, could benefit. We've also applied for, we're waiting to hear back on two, what they call GRIP grants, grid reliability improvement grants. Vepsa itself, we were working, we were already working prior to this coming out with three different developers, looking at 11 different utility scales of like the five megawatt size battery locations around the state. That happened to fit this particular grant pretty well. So we packaged it up into a grant and have asked for $100 million to cover the cost of those batteries and including some distribution system upgrades that would allow them to be used for reliability. And one of them is earmarked for Ludlow. We're looking at a spot for Okemo Mountain right now, but that can move around depending on where we end up. And then the state filed on behalf of all the utilities, a separate part of this grant where money is only available to state agencies. We worked with the Department of Public Service and put a, we have, our portion of statewide ask would be another $6 million. And that's targeted more toward the small commercial residential battery installations. We're waiting to hear back. Those are supposed to come out end of August, we've left, or early September. And then there's several more. Every, every week I get a whole list of another 10 or 20 grants that are coming out. So we're constantly monitoring that. And then just put the fine point, last slide here, the member dues that I mentioned. So the way we're set up, we got the projects which have revenues and, and costs allocated to them. Any of Vepsa's operating costs that aren't covered by a project are covered by this number's dues components. So in that case, the rate cases, rate design, power supply, IT, a whole list here. All of those services are available to all 11 members anytime you need it. And that's rolled into the fee that's charged on load ratio share. So there, there are some times, members can go five, six years without needing a rate case. You might never use our staff for that. And like now we've had, most of the members have been like 10 years without needing a rate case, now all 11 need it once. And some are going back in for the second time in the past year. We manage that workflow internally and bring whatever resources we need to get the work And just list off, I mean, the building, we have a building in a library center, but actually we're evaluating right now whether we need to keep that given the situation after COVID with a lot of people working remotely. We hire contractors, outside lobbyists, legal, do a lot of legal work on behalf of the members. There are occasions where you need to hire your own attorney, but a lot of times we get a question or have to put a filing together. We'll cover that with the Vepsa budget and prepare the legal filing to the point where it's ready to hand off. Pretty much whatever you need us to do, we're an extension of your staff, trying to fill in areas where you might be weak and make sure we can do that in the most cost-effective way. And I'll stop there and happy to answer any questions.
I have a question for you. What's your name, please? Oh, Shannon Barbie Snar. I was speaking to one of your employees yesterday and the situation where she is going to need to go, all right, I guess, question. How is your training process for your higher ups, your linemen, all of this? Because she now has to go train this guy how to even put photos into an email on, like they're on a job, he can't attach his photos to his emails. He's not even receiving his emails. Are you guys having a training process for all of your, you know, say older linemen that don't necessarily know their way around an email or such? How's that? Do you have a training process for these people?
I haven't heard of that particular issue. Lineman training on their job is typically managed by the Northeast Public Power Association. So they're based out of Massachusetts, actually run a lineman school. So that helps them with getting from an apprentice to a first class lineman and training them. We do training, we have a training program established related to the geographic information system, helping the lineman understand how do they capture that data, pictures or otherwise, and get that into the system. I had not heard about a basic like email training. That is something we certainly can do, but we don't have anything to make that work
Can I ask a question? Just curious, was there an actual contract between Burlington Electric and Vepsa for the GIS project?
No.
Why, why was it?
We set that up originally as a project that included all 11 members. And so we, we went out and got the licenses for it. It was approved by the board of directors as a all 11 being in. And honestly, that's why Ludlow was able to get out with about a month of notice. As, as we're converting over now, we're actually relooking at that project and bringing in Empower, which is the original developer that stood it up. And we're kind of reestablishing a baseline and the outcome of that will be contracts with the other tenants still in.
Okay. Tom, are you compensated by Vepsa? You're not? You're just on the board?
Yeah.
Okay. Why, why did you keep? Why, why did you keep paying them if there's no contract?
Keep paying Vepsa? We have a contract with Vepsa.
But for the GIS product, project?
It was conveyed to us that it's going to happen quickly and it just didn't.
Okay. So any further projects with Vepsa would be a contract? So that both sides are responsible, reliable?
We have the AMI project that's going on.
Is there a contract for that?
Yes.
Could I see it? Could we see it?
Yeah.
And the only other question I had too is, so the, the money that was paid, is there check stubs and everything? Could that be produced on both sides?
Yeah.
Pick the board should, we'll have to look at those.
I, I have a question related to, to that. I know in the report last month, it said that this GSI program that's over seventy-five thousand dollars had been paid for that service that we were ever able to use. Is that correct?
I wouldn't describe it that way.
Okay.
Service was, well, the service was available. Part of that was for licenses for software that you did have access to. I, I acknowledge and have said to this board multiple times that we did not move in designing the system the way Loveville wanted it to be designed quickly enough. But the data was there, had access to it. We were maintaining it and making changes based on Loveville's desires. So I wouldn't say it wasn't available. I'd say it wasn't available in exactly the structure that the Loveville staff wanted to see.
Okay. You were able to use it then?
Look at it, yes.
You were able to look at it?
Yeah.
It was a functioning product.
Okay.
It was functioning.
So, so when you say more than seventy-five thousand, I kind of just did a little bit of math in my head. For three years, I had twenty-seven hundred. Can you tell me exactly how much more than seventy-five thousand?
I could, once I begin to reach it, I don't have that number right here.
I don't, I don't have the three years, but I think in the presentation I had the twenty-twenty-three budget number. And it would have, for, for this, this year would have been thirty-six thousand for the full year. And I think the previous two would have been slightly less than that, but not a whole lot.
So that, that's a lot more than seventy-five thousand. So maybe, maybe you can get that number for the board at least?
Yeah.
Well, we wouldn't have built, I'm not sure what the seventy-five thousand reference, but the, from August through December wouldn't have been built. So the actual builds for this year were probably one-twenty. So that, that lines up, I think, better with what you're describing.
Okay. My other question is regarding the AMI system. Is that state mandated? I mean, does Ludlow have to do that?
It's never that simple an answer.
Why did I come up with that?
The, the straight answer, mandated or not, it is not mandated.
Okay.
However, as with anything that this legislature and the regulators here in the state do, they have not said you need, you must put in advanced metering. But they are starting more and more to say, well, you need to put, you need to make time-of-need speed rates available to customers. You need to have a separate rate for electric vehicles. We have to have that in place by June of next year, so we're probably going to have to ask for a waiver. So the way they mandate things is they put requirements in place that the utilities must do this and this that essentially require that technology in order to comply with the end result.
So you have in mind a company to do that?
We went through a three-year process with an RFP, including review committees that had both Vepsa staff and a cross-section of our members. The review committee was like twenty people. Then went through, first we did an RFI, opened it to the whole world. Any vendors that wanted to tell us about their products, we let them propose based on some criteria that we asked them to meet. We had seven companies make filings. Went through that and just picked out three that we thought were the most aligned with what we were trying to do from a functionality, cost, design standpoint. And went through about a full-over-year process with them, RFP, including looking at other installations they, they talking to other customers, grading again with a twenty-member committee, grading them. And coming out of, back into that process, we picked up Clara Systems as the preferred vendor.
Could you spell that phrase?
Their, their international, Vermont Electric Co-op actually uses an older version of their system right now.
So could, could Ludlow Electric, if they wanted to, could they reach out and contract with your own metering company?
Any of our members are free to do, to do what they want. We don't mandate anything.
Well, and I can see that because there are some things that we don't deserve. So this is a one-point-two-million-dollar project. And is that statewide just for Ludlow? And is it like a one-time expense?
So this, the Vepsa-wide, I guess, if I could, a little bit of history. Most of the utilities in Vermont went to this technology back in two thousand nine. There was a federal, you might, I might recover the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, ARA. There was a lot of money, one-hundred-and-thirty-five million brought into the state back then. And all the utilities except the small municipals went to advanced metering at that time. We now, increasing state pressure, looking at what the costs have done, we've decided to take another look. And went through this RFP process. So it's Vepsa-wide for the eleven utilities, we're looking at about ten and a half million dollars for installing the meters, all the technologies that's required to collect the data, the software, all the communications protocols. We need an FCC license for radio. There's a bunch of different components to it. But it's about ten and a half million dollar capital cost, so that's the one-time upfront cost. Ongoing for across all of the utilities, it's just about two-hundred thousand dollars a year to keep that system running. If you look at the Ludlow numbers, I think it was twenty thousand, so you're about ten percent of that. So I will say, I did the project in Burlington when I was there back in two thousand nine. Looking at the cost then, they were cost prohibitive for a small utility to do it. When we looked at it, starting in two thousand eighteen, what we're finding is it is still cost prohibitive for a small utility to implement on its own. Unless you're going to go with a system that has a lot less functionality and might get you through the next couple of years, but as the requirements keep growing, it's going to be a risk. So we've set this up as a centralized project where Vepsa would actually manage the software component of it. The utilities, step back again just a second. One of the difficulties is these AMI systems, the meters are now electronic and they have to be secure. So when you buy an AMI meter from a vendor, it comes with a security code in it. And that works great when you're a Green Mountain Power, you have four-hundred thousand customers. If you have a meter go bad, you've bought enough in inventory to be able to swap it out. As a small utility where you've got a couple of thousand customers, it's much harder to keep that inventory if you're relying on yourself. We've set it up so that the members, all eleven utilities, can share the same security codes. So we look like a much bigger utility and we can swap that hardware even now. And Clara also, one of the big cost savings was Clara agreed to treat Vepsa as one software license. And that's actually the reason they won the bid, because the other company that was in competition with them said, well, they can meet the price on all the equipment, but they wanted every utility to be a separate license for the software. And it just ballooned the budget.
How is Ludlow to recoup this money that we put into this and done that?
So one of the things we have, we, we did initially was cost-benefit analysis of, when you put it in, there actually are savings that you start to get from ability to manage your power supply better, not having to send trucks out with linemen to do reads on the meters.
If we had, right?
If you.
If this was in place.
Correct.
You know?
Right.
So how are we to recoup some of this money at this point?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
To rephrase, so recoup the money for the GIS?
Yeah.
So not the, not the AMI. Would you, would you ask the question, do you be willing to take the money off of the GIS for the AMI contract?
No, that's not actually my call, certainly.
Where Tom? Where the conversation?
Tom is free to take that up with the Board of Directors at Vepsa. They, they, they can decide and do that. I, I don't have the authority to.
Understood.
You're, you're a private company, correct? Explain what you're part of.
We're a nonprofit authority of the state. So the legislature created us. We're, we're kind of a unique animal. Hard to describe sometimes, but the legislature created us, so we're an authority of the state. But they vested ownership of us in the municipal utilities to our members. So Ludlow is actually the partial owner of our company. But it's the eleven municipal utilities that own us and our members that we report to.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is it safe to say that moving forward with AMI metering on the company's free will would benefit the company a lot better than being mandated by the state?
You're asking for my opinion, so stated as such, yeah. I, I think if you, if you don't start to move in this direction, one way or another, to, to install not only AMI, but there are other technology improvements the state wants to see. If you don't start moving in that direction, then what you're going to find is when you file for rate increase, when you file your integrated resource plan, it's going to get increased scrutiny. So they'll, they'll start to try to inflict pain by the regulatory oversight. And it becomes a question of how much of that are you willing to put up with before you actually make the investment? The downside of this is something that's not, you know, laypeople often don't recognize is Ludlow Electric only exists because it was given a franchise territory by the state of Vermont. And they can take it away. The Public Utility Commission has a right to revoke certificate of public good for utilities. So if they ever make a determination that you're not keeping up with what they want you to do policy-wise, very unlikely, they don't do it very often, but that is a potential ultimate outcome. If they just say, well, you're not doing what we need to do, your franchise is revoked. They did it, I think the last time that happened with Citizens Utilities, twenty-five years ago, when Citizens just started, in their case, it was they were building substations without state approval and refused to follow the rules. The state said, don't, you're not. Hope that answered the question.
Safe to say it's better to stay ahead of the law than get hit by the law?
I, I think as somebody who deals with the state every day, I'm, I'm not on the ground, you know, here trying to deal with the issues you are. The perception amongst the state legislators and the regulatory world is actually the municipals are quite a ways behind. They think we're about a decade behind where we really need to be. And so that's why all the pressure is starting to build.
As far as the AMI, based on the track record with the geomapping system, why would we stick with you for continuing with AMI? Based on the amount of money we've paid in the last three years?
This probably is not going to be a satisfying answer, but I think the GIS project is one project out of thirty or forty that Vepsa has done. And I think if you look at our track record and history over time, those have all been successful. The GIS was not. And as a result of the issues that Ludlow had, the GIS administrator that was doing the work is no longer with the company. We've brought in the consultant that stood the project up to, to reset and make sure we're making the changes that Ludlow asked for. And that project will be on track with the other ten that remain. And hopeful, we sit here three years from now, you'll decide, okay, we want back in because it is working. But as it sits here now, my fault. We didn't make the changes we need to in the timeline that had to happen. I'm sorry that it ended up with Ludlow leaving the project, but I can't change history there. I can tell you that everything from generation to financing to the solar development to the renewable energy standard, our projects are successful and save money. So I have no reason to doubt that the AMI won't be in the same place.
And there was no contract for the mapping?
The mapping we set up, it was originally set up as a project that all members agreed to fly into. So it was, it was funded across all members, almost set up like our, our normal member dues. And in retrospect, that should have had a contract attached to it, but it did not. We will be remit.
One point, if it had a contract, it would still be there.
If you had a contract, then the expectation of a product.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't resolve your situation, but I would say one of the challenges for Vepsa is the expectation level on, on different deliverables varies across eleven municipalities.
Sure.
On any given projects, you know, different managers have different view on what they want and how it should be managed. And that's, that is one of the challenges we wrestle with. How do we keep eleven disparate people happy? Contracts can help to a degree.
Are there contracts for each one?
But even with a contract, it's not a guarantee that folks are going to be happy and get what they think they want.
Any questions?
I think you can.
I'll be honest with you. Hope you get up before I'm in that.
I make a motion to enter into executive session with inclusion of department manager for evaluation of employee. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to authorize the chair to issue a written reprimand to an employee regarding the matters discussed in executive session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Onto comments from rate pairs?
Yeah, I guess I have a question. Just probably catching up on this, but Tom, are you a class one lineman or have you been a lineman?
I am.
No? Okay. Are you, are you comfortable supervising linemen without having that experience?
I don't supervise linemen.
No? Okay. You oversee their supervision?
I listen to what they tell me that we should do. I look to Brian and Jeff.
Okay. Do you, do you think there should be someone hired to make sure everything? The reason I ask, I mean, this job is extremely dangerous and the mortality rate is through the roof. So, is, you know, is this the safest dynamic, in your opinion?
Probably not.
Is there a way to fix that?
Hire somebody else?
Would there be a position that would have to be created?
Possibly.
Is the board have any thoughts on that?
I would say, if you look at all the other utility commissions, all the other utilities, they all have someone that they answer to, Green Mountain Power. I'm sure that lady is not, that's running that, is not a first-class lineman.
Okay.
And they answer to her.
They have.
She doesn't, she does not run the outside operations. So, which is how we're set up here.
Green Mountain also has a lot of inside.
May I have your name, please?
Steven Sternaugh. Green Mountain also has a lot more inside resources as far as knowledge and education and people they can turn to for questions. So, if someone's in a supervisory position that doesn't have the licensing experience, they can go to someone that does before that decision's made. I mean, we're structured a lot different than they are.
We're a lot smaller than they are.
Exactly. Which is why I think we're, we need to have somebody in that position that has the experience or the education equivalent.
Gene, at the, at the last meeting, we talked a lot about job descriptions. And I, I don't know if any progress has been made on that because that's where you could address. We, there, there is in your handbook a position for a superintendent. And the job description maybe should, you know, list some of these responsibilities. That might be a place to start. And if you, if you have someone that can do the job, fine. If you don't, then you need to find somebody.
Gene, I heard you mention the handbook. Is that available online or where did you get the handbook? Is it an employee handbook that lists policies and procedures? Where is that?
I just happen to have a copy, an old one. I think I got it from here. I mean, the board should know, or Tom, don't you have a policy book?
Yeah, that is an outdated one. We're in the process right now of redoing it.
Okay, they only have an outdated one, George, but I'm sure you could get a copy.
An outdated one?
No, outdated one.
All they have is an outdated one.
Updated or outdated?
Okay.
Updated.
Outdated.
Outdated.
I mean, it's not up to date.
And, and where is that? I mean, does anybody have access to it?
Um, right now, the updated version is in the hands of commissioners for review and approval.
So, there's an updated one, but there must be an old one too, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we get access to the old one?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to get a copy, please. And where is it online? Where can I get a copy? So, I can stop by tomorrow and get one?
It's not online, but we could give you a copy tomorrow, sure.
Great, I'll stop by tomorrow. When was the last one that's in place now ratified?
Two years.
So, so, two years ago? So, it's not that old? So, to Gene's point about not only job descriptions, but job titles, we talked about that in the last meeting. So, every employee would know what their title is and what their responsibilities, duties are, that type of thing.
And then, what they, and then, what you call the, uh,
Task.
The pecking order, right?
Right, cuz.
The team that commands.
Yeah.
Who reports to who?
The old, the old one that you're talking, the outdated one, still has superintendent.
Yes.
When did we decide, when, cuz I couldn't find it in the minutes, when they chose to get rid of superintendent and just use foreman? Because the outdated one still says manager, superintendent, board.
Right.
But now, we don't have a superintendent, so does that mean Brett automatically, the foreman goes up to superintendent?
Brett's a lineman.
Right, he's a lineman, so, but, so we don't have a superintendent?
No.
Uh, but it's still a title in there.
That's what the board is gonna do is vote on this new manual.
So, we're going to reinstate the superintendent or we're going to get rid of that title?
Right now, it's department manager and foreman.
And that's what it's going to be in the new handbook?
That's what it was voted on in minutes, minutes a few years ago.
We haven't discussed that yet.
Okay.
Cuz there should have been a motion made and it should have been approved.
Yeah.
What you're saying, and it was in the minutes?
Yes.
And when? You can only go, you can only go back.
I don't know the exact date, but.
Right, you can only go back on the website to the minutes for January, February. There's nothing.
Right, it was probably.
Can, can those be put on the website?
Sure.
So, there was a vote to get rid of superintendent or there?
Not to get rid of. There was a vote to make me the department manager. And the outside reports to me, I report to the board.
When did that vote happen?
That's what I just told you. I don't know exactly.
It could have been last year or made a vote. When did you come on board?
March.
Of last year? So, it was before him, cuz I was on that board.
So, so we'll be able to find it when they put the minutes up for previous?
I, I did look up the difference between foreman and superintendent. And there, there's not a lot, except generally a super, superintendent does most of his business in the office. He doesn't work in the field where a foreman, they both, they both would control day-to-day operations, the workers. But the superintendent would very rarely go out and actually do any work where the foreman does go out and work. Because last meeting, I said I didn't, didn't know the difference, so I looked it up.
Does, does the board think efficient to kind of be playing this game of telephone as opposed to having a foreman and a superintendent both reporting to the board with their duties as opposed to having a field manager then report to a superintendent, then report to the board? You afraid that anything's getting missed in translation?
I, I didn't follow that, Brian.
You get, you get, basically, you have reports coming from one part, you're being, Tom's reporting to you. He's getting reports from field supervisors.
Yeah.
So, you're now getting that now third-hand. Do you feel that that's the best way for you to receive your information?
He, he gives us a report.
Reports directly to you?
Yeah, every month. I've got one right there. We're gonna have it.
And what's his title?
He's a foreman.
Okay, so there is some.
Well, I started on this board two years ago. And Dean Brown was the office manager. This is quite a while ago. Howard Barton, of course, was always the superintendent. He was in charge. So, things I see now got switched around. What, a year ago, Bob, or something like that?
It's twenty-twenty-one.
Longer than that, yeah.
Oh, but I wasn't present. Okay, so that's the, that's information for me, but that's the way I understood it. It's the way it was.
So, Brian, what is your classification? You're a, you're a foreman?
Yep.
Um, but that's not a lineman, right? That's something different. Have you ever trained as a lineman or?
Just under Howard.
Just under Howard. Um, okay. So, so have you ever worked in the field or in the buckets or, yeah, so you have some sort of knowledge on that, but you haven't gone through any of the formal training?
Howard didn't believe in formal training, so.
Right, can I, what's your class? A class lineman, are you?
I don't really have a class.
I believe it's a lineman.
You have no class?
No.
But you supervise.
Yep.
So, we have.
He is an electrician.
In the communication.
He is an electrician. He has passed his.
There's a huge difference between electrician and lineman.
Right. But.
Especially a class one lineman.
Two different animals.
Yeah.
Yeah. Electricians can get zapped. They die.
Actually, believe it or not, one-twenty kills more people than high voltage does.
Doesn't. Is that potentially because of training?
One more people exposed to one-twenty and they're all right. But I believe in voltage, there's numbers in the range, there's most dangerous occupation.
And can I ask you, Tom, what your electrical background is?
Zero.
Zero. And so, you two are the ones that are reporting to the board, the two of you, yeah?
I mean, I've been five, almost going in my fifth year here with departments, so I've gained quite a lot since my day one.
Yeah, you gain knowledge, so, yeah, of course.
Yeah. Through Vepso, through training.
And you're a board member with us, Vepso?
I'm on the board, yeah. They have one member. Each member sends one person. Morrisville, Orleans.
Each. Electric department sends one member to be on board, I understand.
Correct.
When Howard left, who took over his position or did his duties in his absence?
Uh, it would have been Brett.
Brett Sanderson?
Yes.
As a lineman?
I do, yes, absolutely, yeah.
Took over the duties of the head.
Yeah, superintendent.
Superintendent, yeah.
So, wouldn't it make sense to have him stay in that position, being that he was trained by Howard?
Actually, that's part of a personnel issue that's being addressed. And we can't really discuss it.
Sorry, removing his name from the situation though, wouldn't, wouldn't it be a better situation for us otherwise, you think? If we have someone that was capable of doing it and has done it?
How long we been looking for a lineman?
Who's asking the question?
Trying to catch up.
Sanders.
Carol.
Carol, she is.
How many?
She was asking for your name, yeah.
Three years?
She was asking for your name.
Carol, she should have known my name, Carol Sanderson.
She couldn't see that.
You told her that.
And I have a question.
How many, you didn't say, how many years?
Can you repeat the question again? I'm sorry.
Now you get a guy, you finally got one. Now you got him here for two weeks and now you wanna get rid of the lineman you have there already. That really makes no sense to nobody. That's just plain stupidity. You need a lineman there. You've just, you've read on that before. You need at least three linemen. Used to be four.
I do agree with that, absolutely.
And I'd go back farther than anybody, cuz I would have been telling Bert when he started out there fifty years, and I know how it was. He ran the crank shift and he did a hell of a job.
And I have a question. In this new handbook, besides job descriptions for each of the people, is there also requirements that are going to be listed?
There'll be duties, yes.
Well, not duties. What should be their requirements to hold that position?
Yes, there is requirements.
Qualification.
Yes, qualification.
What will be the qualifications for a foreman? While it's being amended, right? I just, I, I think I speak for everyone. I have real, I, you know, a partner in a business. I never have any of my guys do anything I've already done. I've never put them in a position that I haven't previously been put in. And when the stakes are so high, I just question that dynamic here. It's, seems very dangerous.
I have a question. I know, or I've been told, so the poles, the amount of voltage that there are in the handbook, it requires that you have a team of three on each job, right? And I understand that Brett was written up for a situation where there wasn't a team of three. However, can you tell me how often you guys actually have a team of three out on a job? It's mostly two people typically, right? So, how come Brett is the only one that's been written up on this and nobody else has? Is that a degree of age discrimination or is it? I mean, right now, if he's the only one that's been written up for not having three people on the pole, but you always only have two people on the poles, how come that is, how come he's the only one that was written up without? Don't know. Is it age discrimination? Is it? Anyway, there needs to be an answer to that. I mean, if it is required in the handbook that you have three people working on that amount of voltage and every pole in Ludlow is whatever that amount is, why, why are we sending two people and they're not getting written up on it? How is that?
Is it true that every pole is that voltage?
Every pole in Ludlow, I believe. Even if you're working in a house, you're still.
Access to, yeah.
Yeah, and even if you're working in a house, you're still dealing with that pole. You know, even if you're not touching the pole, you're still dealing with that amount of voltage, so why is it that?
Why is it that we're breaking rules every time we go in?
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Why are we?
Why is that?
That's the problem, yeah.
Well, that's something that as, as the manager, you need to be addressing.
Exactly.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
Is three a safety issue? Is that why you have three?
Yes.
How many linemen do we have?
We've got three class one linemen and two practices and you've got myself.
So, then how do, we have three, I mean, how do they stay?
Could you repeat that to the record?
Sure.
Because they're talking, I couldn't hear you.
We have two class one linemen, we have two practices and myself.
And, and you are not, you've just been electricians. We're electricians.
My line is, Howard always called everybody lineman.
Well, you have to go through training to be a lineman, right?
Howard didn't believe in training.
I understand Howard didn't, but that's not the case at PAM now. In order to be a lineman, you have to go through the schooling, the training, right? Correct?
It's a lot.
Are you getting paid as a lineman or are you?
We're working on that right now.
Okay. Yeah, you haven't done the training. And nothing against you, I'm just saying, I get that Howard under, Howard did it that way, but Howard is no longer here.
I have a home job training with Howard.
Is there, is there a lot, what's the liability to the department or the village with this dynamic potentially? Has, has you thought about it all? Something were to go wrong?
Have we thought about it at all?
Yeah, I mean it.
Yeah, we've thought about it at all.
Okay.
Just had a conference with Boshia regarding your last accident.
Well, I heard earlier that the Public Utility Commission, I think this is all wrong, but I think I heard that the Public Utility Commission is the one that kind of authorizes, is that the right word? Gives you the reason or whatever to function as a, as Ludlow electric? The guy said something about that. The Public Utility Commission is that approves, they give you license, they do something like that, and they can also take it away.
Right.
So, if they, and none of us want to take it away. I don't think any of us do. So, if they discover, why, why do they take it away?
they discover, why, why do they take it away? Would they take it away if they suddenly found out we were sending trucks out all the time, and two people, and you're supposed to have three?
Who would say?
They would perhaps?
Perhaps.
Turn off the camera.
Perhaps they would.
Yeah, I, I'm just saying, I don't think any of us here really want the level electric to put in jeopardy, and if this is one way, you could be, and theoretically, you could lose our license or whatever it is, I think that needs to be addressed. And I also know, the last meeting I brought with the question about, do we have enough staff, do we have enough people? And that led into a discussion, oh, we aren't paying enough, so people get trained, and then leave, and go someplace else. Then I've heard about the superintendent's thing, and I'm wondering if there's that in the budget right now? Is there money in the budget for a superintendent? And if there is, and we not, don't have a superintendent, why don't you consider taking that money, spreading it out, give everybody pay raises, they will keep people.
And on that note, George, we also discussed in the last meeting about maybe doing a contract, if we're sending people for schooling, we're paying for them to become a lineman, why don't we have a contract with them that they stay on with us for a year after we pay?
After we end the service, yeah.
We're paying for them to go to school, and then the second they get out, they're going to Green Mountain because they pay more. Have we looked at a contract in that situation?
Well, we have not.
Personally, I disagree with a contract. Vermont's in that, Will State. And yes, we send the guys to training, and we pay for it, and so doesn't everybody else? And they're, and they all do the same thing. And do you want somebody working here that's not happy? It's gonna leave anyway.
I don't think that's about.
So why would we, why would we invest in somebody that's not gonna?
Don't contract employees.
You don't, you don't count on it.
Yeah, what an investment is, is so you can see a return on it, if we contractually obligate them to give us two years of service, then we're getting something out of that, what we put in, at least.
How are you gonna do that?
Two years of an unhappy employee could do a lot of damage to the company.
But why would an employee be unhappy, then we're doing something wrong if employee's unhappy?
Yeah, we're not paying them enough, for one thing.
Do you have a budget?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Is, what's, what's there a superintendent's salary in the budget?
There was, yes.
There was. There, there's still, you're still in the budget year, right?
It's gone now, it's gone now. Yes, it's gone now.
What, why is it gone?
We had a superintendent in there until the sick payment.
No, I, I mean your budget for the year, your fiscal year?
We do not have money in there for budget, a budget figure in there for superintendent this year.
What's your fiscal year?
Calendar.
Calendar year? So in January, did you have money in there for a superintendent?
No.
No, okay.
And the board approved that to remove those funds?
They were never put in, there was no removal.
Did our rates go down then?
No.
So we lost a superintendent, and you just took that money out and operated without a superintendent? At whose decision, the board or employees?
Well, the, the budget was probably approved by the board, right? Can, can we see the budget that was presented in January, and there should be minutes approving that budget, a motion to approve the budget, right?
I do not know if there was a motion to approve the budget.
Okay.
Who's the secretary?
There's, I'm sorry, is the. So this board doesn't operate with a secretary to record minutes at every meeting?
You got one now. Now we don't.
Today, just today, today, he's volunteer.
Yes.
So who, is that why you can't produce the minutes that the public is asking for? Who types up, who's recorded and typed up the minutes?
So I've been on those boards for five years, and since I got here, Tom has always recorded minutes. They're in the book.
Okay.
It's not online.
I think the overarching issue here is, I, I've had every board member say we never wanna sell, or Ludo Electric will always be, will always be Ludo Electric. But things that are happening, I think, will take that decision out of this board's hands. The PUC, OSHA, all this stuff, at some point, there's gonna be, you know, at some point, that decision might not be able to be made here. And I think that's what we're all trying to avoid, that's why we're here, you know, conveying this to you. So I know everyone all wants to sell, but there comes to a point where that might not be your choice or our choice.
So we have three, did you say, I couldn't hear what you said, three third-class linemen?
Two.
Two. Um, do you guys have anything to say about it?
Something odd, turmoil pretty much.
May I have your name, please?
Ryan Wardell.
Ryan or Brian?
Ryan. I think just a lot of turmoil and a lot of problems could be avoided. Honestly, in the last couple of months, you come to these meetings and, I don't know, I like to know what's going on, because I work there every day. I enjoy coming in, but I don't know, it just seems like every day it's something, something else, something else is just like a domino effect, and I don't, it's not my favorite thing to just come into a bunch of problems, I like to, I don't know, it was, when I first came here, it was like a family, I don't know. I always looked up to Brett, I mean, I don't know, it's just kinda sad that it just came to that, but obviously, it's out of my hands, but.
I hope the board picked up, last month's meeting, when we asked why they were here, when we were talking about retention of employees, and we asked them why they were here, their answer was Brett. So, that amazes me with the actions that have happened since the last meeting. And we know we're overhurt over employees, and we're doing this. But can't find the logic.
May I ask a procedural question, Barbara Hyland? Um, who attended the executive session tonight? I, I don't know who you all are.
Tom Patras, our manager. Bob Brandt, commissioner.
It was just three of you?
George, not it.
Three, four. It was just the four of you, Brian, did you stay in? And is there a clerk of the board?
Yeah, I'm the clerk, because I don't do minutes.
And so, you don't take the minutes?
No.
Okay.
I took the job, but I'm not doing minutes.
And is there some record of the executive meeting?
No.
No.
Was a vote taken?
No.
No.
A vote was not taken?
No.
I thought, I thought this was a.
After, after the executive session, you had action, right, Brett?
Yeah.
There was a motion made.
Can't, you can't go in an executive session.
Right, right. That's proper.
I asked, um, in the last meeting if, if there had been any illegal meetings, which would be more than two of you meeting, correct, because it's a board of three? Um, I was told that, uh, there was a meeting with you and the other third class with the board before the meeting last month. Would that be considered an illegal meeting with the three of you and two third classes?
We were just asking employees
Linemen?
How they felt.
With three board members there? Wouldn't that be considered a meeting? If you have all three?
We were not making any policy, we were just asking the employees how they felt.
I think you might wanna check Robert's rule, because I think she's correct, that's considered a meeting, the three of you shouldn't have been together.
Well, hang on. You, they can meet, but they can't discuss any business. They can ask questions of employees. Maybe you go out to the field and you're questioning employees on this and that, but you can't discuss among yourselves. Technically, that would be considered a meeting.
All, all we did was ask employees how they felt.
So that's, that's in Robert's rules, if you read them out.
Can, can I ask if somebody on the board would make a motion to have, um, pre, uh, the monthly meeting for the electric light department in a, in the town hall, or in a building where people can come and see and hear and sit down?
Yeah, we already talked, we already.
But, oh, so you decided that?
We talked when you, when you asked, we, we agreed that we would have.
Okay. Okay, so, so it just will happen, that's fine.
Yeah, but we have to make sure we have a rule, I don't, I don't know when the other meeting, so.
Okay. I thought Brendan can tell you that.
What was that?
Brendan.
Yes, sir.
There he is, there's a man. Um, can they make a motion to maybe move this to the town hall next meeting, or?
Town hall could do that, I mean, we could, yeah, it just ends up in the day.
I don't, I don't think we need to make a motion.
No, if you want a meeting, you just wanna make sure it's won properly, but the town hall can accommodate that, that's the problem.
Just want a meeting where it is.
And that way it will be on the town website, so people can see it easily.
And we can sit. Yeah.
I didn't sit.
I can hear. Stop being a little lazy.
That's right, I'm just kidding, but it's true. Kidding, but it's true.
Any comments from the board on what we're discussing, or no?
We can't talk about some of it.
Sure, I understand, but we talk about a lot.
Because basically, it's all a personnel issue.
Sure. Not even a, we'll try to do more?
So, Tom, I think that, um, Ken said you could, um, approach the board of VESA and ask that some of the, probably closer to a hundred thousand dollars be returned?
You go for that day.
Will you do that?
You'll go for me that day.
I'll go, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to.
So we backed out of that in the end of July?
Last meeting. Last meeting.
So did we pay for July and August?
No, just to true up.
Uh, at, at the last meeting as well, we discussed, um, a small percentage, uh, rate increase to be able to pay our linemen and our employees a reasonable rate compared to Green Mountain, is that something you guys discussed at all, or? I know you were waiting on a grant situation, because the amount of money we have in our, what was it, nine million, X, uh, in our?
But, yeah, I think it was like three, or something like that.
What's it called, the?
Reserves.
Reserves, thank you. Um, so, because we had so much, they didn't want us to raise the rates yet, or whatever, you had said something about there being a grant in order for that, or finding out if we could raise the rates in order, what was it, I think it was three percent? In order, or even two percen, five percent? In order to be able to pay our linemen and our employees a reasonable rate to hold on to employees, or even to get new employees, really?
And typically, the PUC does not recognize the fact that you wanna raise your rates to pay alignment more. You have to pay alignment more first and be in the hole, and then go to the PUC and say, we need money. That's how it works.
We're running up, we're, we're running at a loss at this point, right?
Yeah, yes.
And, but we have nine million in the, is that what it was, was it nine million?
I wish, I wish.
Three, three million, okay. Um, maybe that was the budget or something. Um, but we're not going into the reserves to be able to pay them anymore. And if we can't raise our rates to pay them anymore, how are we going to do that?
Going to reserves.
I can't, we can't hear you.
Going to the reserve, it's the only way you can get the money, I mean, to pay more for the alignment.
So, but you had gone to the state and said we wanted to raise our rates, and they said no, because we had three million in the reserve, or?
Basically.
Basically, or?
That has a, that has a, that has a factor, it's a convoluted calculation, but that has a factor on it, for sure.
So, but could we raise our rates in order to pay our alignment more, we can't, that's regulated by?
PUC.
What's the, what mechanism are you guys gonna use to be able to go to the PUC to request a rate increase? Is it, are you, are you, is there a plan to, to have that be done, or is it still being thought of?
We have a rate case in effect right now that we're going through. But it looks like it's gonna be denied.
Okay.
So, we will do it again next year.
Is that something you can only do annually?
Yes.
It is.
How did we petition them for the rate increase that you're anticipating we got to find out? What did we base that on?
The, this rate case that we just put in?
Yes.
And it can be only on known and measurable facts that you have in your financial statement. It can't be, we plan on doing this, or we anticipate doing this, that is not part of the rate case. Has to be known, known and measurable.
Based on the last year? That's based on the last year.
Based on past year, what you actually paid.
Is there a way to take money out of the reserves and put it into a here, my account for retention and for hiring of employees? So that, then we don't have as much, we still possess the money, but it's not in the reserve fund, so looking to the future, we'd be able to go?
They still recognize, they, they still recognize that as equity.
So, they look at overall equity of the entire company?
Yeah.
You'd even say that?
Okay.
So, is that, is that the intention to exhaust those funds retweet before next year?
Not before next year, but definitely deplete them as needed, for sure.
Will that include rate, rate increases, pay rate increases?
It could, it could, yeah.
So we can't, I'm sorry, I was sitting down and, you know, this and some of this, I'm sure, so we pay lower than most or a lot, and we can't get an increase in our rate so that we could pay more. But we have three million in this account, and we can't use any of that to help give benefits and increase our pay.
No, we can use that.
We can use that, okay, and so we use some of that, we don't have so much in reserves, and then we put in for a rate increase, and then we might be able to get a rate increase? So what's the problem with that? What am I not seeing there, is that we're doing everything you can to keep employees and offer a respectable wage to get new people in, because obviously, we just heard we don't have enough people with the right certifications, whatever those are, sorry, lineman, first class, I, I don't know, but it would seem like then the board should be doing everything they can to find some money to increase the pay for our employees that we have, and for new employees. Maybe if we advertise that, maybe you'll get some applicants, I know it's gotta be tough out there, it's tough with every, every profession right now, but it, it, it doesn't make sense to me for the third time to hear, you know, we're not paying our people very much, we can't get a rate increase, and we're not trying to figure anything else out, it seems to me we should be doing that.
One of the bigger problems they have here is a conflict of interest.
A what?
A conflict of interest?
Conflict of interest with some of the higher-up people, those are the employees.
So the money's staying with the higher-up people?
No, I run, delete the money altogether. Navigation wise.
How do we fix conflict of interest? Who needs to back down, who needs to step up, what, how, how are we gonna fix this?
Don't know what the conflict of interest is.
You just said there's a problem with conflict of interest.
Well, certain people are not getting along together.
So people aren't getting along, and I think we all know that. I mean, everyone's here because of that, people are not getting along.
Because there's certain people wanna run, they don't have the knowledge to run it, they shouldn't be doing it.
So how do we, how do we fix that?
Okay, but that's not a conflict of interest.
It's poor heritage.
It's poor heritage, hiring people that aren't qualified to make the proper decisions to keep the company efficiently and effectively running. Do, do we have the properly qualified people in place to make these decisions? Because it sounds to me like we don't. I'm not hearing a lot of action, I'm hearing a lot of agreement as to what the problems are, but I'm not hearing any proposals or any solutions, just a lot of head shaking. And head shaking isn't going to sustain the depart, the, the electric department. Head shaking isn't going to get us the personnel that we need. It sounds to me like there needs to be some executive management changes that will then allow for the company to properly operate. So I might not understand this properly, but so with an executive meeting?
They don't respond?
I thought that was only the board. In an, in an executive meeting, I thought that was only supposed to be the board members there.
Whoever you invite in.
It's whoever you invite in?
Yeah.
Very unaware.
So it's personnel.
Okay.
If you're dealing with a, with a personnel issue, you can call that person in. But it's not a, not made public, whatever you talk to that person about.
Okay.
But I think that person that you invited in could invite other people in.
No.
No?
It's up to the commissioner.
Who was inviting him, Mr. Brian?
He was. Has the, the, the person that you're discussing as a personnel issue had an opportunity to defend their accusation, or whatever the problems are that necessitate going into executive?
It's in the handbook. They can, they can rate whatever they want, they can respond to it. They can respond to whatever they've been recommended. Maybe it was public, right?
If you, if you publish.
It's up to the, it's up to the person.
Well, I think it would be okay if it's time to go on with the rest of the agenda, unless somebody doesn't agree.
I think that would be great.
All right, so no comment? What's the word, what are the rest, the other items on the agenda?
Uh, just act on the minutes, foreman's report, manager's report, other business, that's it.
All right.
Thanks.
You're welcome. All right, so act on the minutes on July 27th to 2023.
I, I would make a motion, we accept the minutes as written.
Oh, so. Do the foreman's report for Brian?
I have 23. Street line maintenance, we've got one. Meter readings started today, we're training one metering body to read this. Substation checks are going as planned. We have 21 underground locates this month. Line maintenance, we have a project going on at the Tyson store, moving a pole temporary for a box over installation. As a result of that, it'll be scheduled objects for the league region, Wednesday the 30th, 10:00 AM, 12:00. Still have multiple service upgrades going on. We have multiple servers cover ups out there. Line construction, 103 project is out to bid, one contractor has responded for pulling wires and digging. Line trimmer will be starting in the next few weeks, depending on traffic control availability. Um, we have a like, safety meeting is electrical test equipment last month. We had two banners, I allowed one banner to stay out longer than the 10-day allowance, and that was the disaster relief banner. Um, that came down, we installed the summer festival banner. Vehicle maintenance is we got new tires on both new pickups. The GMP line to South Face Village is almost nearing completion. FR clothing has been ordered for all employees. And I have fuel pump quotes for the fuel pumps and tank replacement. I'd like to inform with a Kennedy quote, almost half the price is the other Beardsley. The only thing the Kennedy quote doesn't install is labor to install it. That shouldn't be more than $2,500, $3,000.
For everything?
To install. Couple, couple of questions. This is replacing our fuel tank, right, up there, Brian? Pretty much the whole thing. So is, is that bad, is it? The tanks are at, they're very, I've had somebody come and look at them. And really need to be replaced before there's a problem.
Okay, so this quote for $22,000?
Yep.
Plus $2,500 bucks?
Right.
So about $2,500.
I haven't got a quote on that labor, but I'm just going off the Beardsley quote on that labor. Yep. One thing to bring to the point on the fuel pumps is they quoted a cheaper tank, it's a $3,000, sorry, almost a $4,000 tank, $2,000 is the change. Uh, that tank only has a one-year warranty. The current tanks that we have come with a 30-year warranty. There's quite a price difference in yours. From Beardsley, that same tank to replace is $15,000. From Kennedy, that tank is $12,000. So I did have them include the cheaper tanks, although ideally, I'd like to go with the better quality tanks. Yeah, I don't, I don't, if we're going to do it, don't, don't do a one-year warranty. One thing Howard taught me was build it for 50 years. Yeah. So. I, I agree that. That's, that's my opinion, my other, my other question before we talk about that. When Green Mountain Power takes over South Face Village, is that going to affect us? Is that taking rates away from us, or no? They're customers, they're customers, they're existing customers. Instead of going through the lines. Right. So they, they're doing it, they just running our lines, okay. They're customers. That, that was my question.
Tom, all the board members, everybody who's here, thank you for doing such a good job. You know, I know it's tough, people are being hard on, kind of hard on you, but you're wiggling through it just fine. I mean, Tom, when you came on here, this place was a sinking ship. You've done a lot to right that, and so have the board of commissioners.
May I have your name for that?
Brian Martel. And thanks for coming up with it.
Thank you, Brian. So.
You're all right.
What was, what was the difference? What's the, you got a price for the 30-year one, is another? So the 30-year tank is $12,000 from Kennedy and $15,000 from Beardsley. Even, even the 30-year tank is from Kennedy? Both of them, that thing. Yeah, okay, okay. It's not in the quote, the cheaper tanks are in the quote, but I have it written in the mail. Yeah. I, I would make a motion that we go with Kennedy as long as it's the 30-year tank. And if, if there's a big difference in the price, then I, I want you to bring it back to us. Difference as far as? Big, if, if you get the 30-year tank and they boosted it up. Okay, other than what I got in? Other than what you have in the quote, then I'd like you to bring it back, that's all. So it'll be $44,000 minus whatever the six, six or seven thousand is in the, so we're shooting. So for the two tanks from Kennedy, it's $6,678.33. That's for the two cheaper tanks. Yeah, but what? For the better quality tanks, for $12,000, that would be 20, so that should be $24,000 minus $6,678. Either way, it's way cheaper than.
It's still cheaper.
It'll be $17,400.
Still cheaper than Beardsley. Yeah, yeah, that's, Beardsley scared me a little bit when I read that one first. Okay, that's. This is a, it's got a fuel monitoring system. So it's going to be a lot like what the town has set up. There, there's 20 key fobs that come in the system, so just say, L39 is the truck that I drive every day, I'll take the key fob out. Hit it, ding, and it turns on, you know, L39 pumped X amount of gallons. And on top of that, it will respond right to my laptop or Tom's computer. And there's tank monitoring in that, which is a state code. So 3 o'clock in the morning, the diesel tank starts dropping 50 gallons an hour, it's going to buzz. It's going to buzz somebody. So we don't have that now, which needs to be done.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, we got a second.
See, we're not supposed to.
All in favor?
Yeah. Any, any idea when, when they can do that, Brian? So the? Before winter? Being a man controlled, I'm hoping. I'm not going to be out here cutting pipes at 20 blows a year. So before that? So, I'm hoping before that. Everything is pretty much available, up to my failure is where Kennedy is at. There's a few things that'll be on the syllable. Okay. And the advantage, the other advantage to Kennedy is they'll let us work with them as opposed to Beardsley won't. I shouldn't say won't, I didn't ask the question. But they didn't seem too willing to let us work with them as far as using our crane to crane the tanks out of the way and, you know, labor for them.
Is that it, Brian? All right, thank you. Manager's report?
Okay. Light Department continues to work with customers who are still trying to get their business and homes back online from the flood. Still going through that, still a lot of people out there without power because of their condition at home. On August 7th, the Department of Public Service issued a call to action to all Vermont Regulated Utilities to participate in a voluntary two-month moratorium on disconnects. Ludlow Electric joined the call to action, so we support that moratorium. Update on the compressors for Ochemo Snowmaking. The light department has been able to get three prices on compressors for Ochemo Project. We now are waiting estimated freight charges, and the final, final orders for the compressors should go out in the next few business days.
Transformers and compressors?
Transformers. Yes, prices on transformers. On the Magra Solar project, another month has gone by, and they still have not come to an agreement on the lease. So they're kicking that can down the road. The GIS update, NISC manager was on site on the 16th and got the paperwork in place to get the light department signed up to go on the NISC GIS platform. And on Tuesday of this week, the light department had a closing conference with VOSHA regarding our April 21st accident. Any questions? How'd that go? There will be citations to come along, they weren't elaborated in the name, that'll be, something will be coming through the name.
That is it?
That's it.
Thank you. Other business?
I would like to bring something up. So we did our, I know we can't act on it, but we did our raises last December or whatever. Assuming that, that the town was doing 5%, which we did. However, the town has done 10%. So I'd like to bring that up next meeting and, and vote on that, that, that we go, go with the 5%. And it, and the town went retroactive to the first of their, their quarter, so I guess we can, we can discuss that. But that, I did, did a couple that doesn't put us anywhere near Green Mountain Power, but it does bring us up pretty well against the other smaller utilities. So I'd, I'd like to have that on the agenda for next week. As an action item? Yeah. Where do you want that on the agenda, up front first, or after the comments on the light pairs, before? I think the light pairs comments are supposed to be first, I'm not sure, Tom. It'll be on the agenda for, we can check on that. It'll be on the agenda for an action item. Yeah. That's, that's all I have.
I'm basically almost out.
All right, I'll make a motion to the chairman.
Can I just bring up? I'll second it.
Yeah.
I just wanted to talk about, I have, one of my chief linemen is really stepping up right now, helping us out through this. I really think he deserves a little bit of a raise. I didn't have a chance to talk to anybody else about this, but I just want it to be considered. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up was the 103 project. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up was, the 103 project, no contractors are really knocking down our door to come work for us. We don't have the manpower to do it, so I'm meeting with Groton next week. They've been working out of our shop. He's gonna give us a price to do that. And I'm also gonna talk to him about a railroad crossing that is troublesome for us. So just, just to let you know what's going on.
Yep.
That's all I.
So, so in other words, we're not gonna get three bids on that?
Say that again?
We're not gonna get three bids on the 103 project.
We're not gonna get three bids on that.
Okay.
I can get three different bids on excavation, but I can't get three bids on line workers.
Yep.
I've called the union house for union contractors. I've done everything I can do. I got one more resource that I'm gonna work on, and it's NEPA, our training company. They worked with me immensely during the flood to get us contractors down here for emergency situations. This is a big work, it's not an emergency, so. So that's what, I just wanted to let you know that I'm doing.
And do we, do we still need more help?
Certainly wanna hear. I am, I'm mad as hell, I'm like.
So what do we need? We need?
Next question.
Another first-class lineman?
I'm bouncing around like a pinball. I could almost use an assistant to help me do what I'm doing. I'm still doing some dig safes that one of my linemen don't feel comfortable doing, which is perfectly okay.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna question to do something you don't feel right.
Yeah.
I'm still heading up a lot of the higher-end metering stuff that I don't feel comfortable handing off to other employees. That's where I'm at. Tom and Michael have been very helpful with doing a lot of the paperwork for me, which I tell you is, I couldn't, I couldn't do it without it.
Yep.
Just can't.
Yep.
It's not possible.
And it's working good for us, Superman, it really is.
What?
Trying to keep everybody.
We were adjourned, right?
Yep.
Oh, did you?
I made a motion.
You made a motion, nobody seconded it.
George second, George second, and the vote, three?
Three.
Thanks, good night, guys.